Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel, so it will be available for anyone that's not in attendance tonight. Number two, invocation by Pastor Dan Wetzel of Faith Community Church. Pastor.
Our Heavenly Father, we take this time before the meeting begins because we recognize that everything we do is done in your sight. We know, Lord, that you have called upon us to seek the welfare of the city, to seek the welfare of the place where we reside. And these men and women are gathered here tonight with responsibilities to do that very thing. And so, Lord, we ask that you would first of all, give them wisdom and understanding. Lord, give them imaginations to look for new solutions to old problems. Grant them, Lord, the grace to be able to make those kinds of things which indeed will be good for our community as a whole. Lord, we want to commit the time to you. We believe, Lord, that you are sovereign, that you oversee our affairs, that you reward both the righteous and the unrighteous with sunshine and rain, but, Lord, you have called upon us to be righteous people. And so, we come before you asking that you would, by your Spirit, enable us for that very purpose and that very thing. We thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you for your Son. We thank you, Lord, that we can call upon you freely because Jesus has made a way for us to do that and to enter into your throne. So, we commit this time to you in the name of Christ. Amen.
Counselman Freida, do you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, roll call. Go.
Here.
Freida.
Here.
Isaac.
Yes.
All right, before I ask for an approval of the agenda, I would like to move number seventeen, which is a consideration to engage legal counsel for the future TIF incentive for Nelson Boylan Lorette Funeral Home, to just following all of our public hearing and action items, so between thirteen and fourteen.
Seventeen.
Yep, seventeen, between thirteen and fourteen. And I would also like to add an item, if you would so approve, to just discuss the comp plan at the end, wherever time allows here, let's say after number twenty.
So, twenty point one.
Twenty point one. For comp plan and then the planning and zoning commission met today and just some discussion.
I'll move to per the agenda with those changes. One second.
So, Bills, Freida, roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Freida.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
Peter Frank?
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Okay, number six, proclamation and special notices. Has Ethan Stewart finished the academy? Do we know yet?
No.
I will. Okay, we'll talk about that another time. We don't have anything then for tonight. Number seven is public comments. This is a two-minute limit and you must sit in at the front door to speak. We have two. So, Karen Blue is here to talk about the comprehensive plan. Karen.
Do you want it now or do you want it before then?
Um, now would be fine, during public comment. And if we have questions during the discussion.
I realize the importance of the comp plan. And I serve on the planning and zoning board and we have a book. I've been to the book, I've been to some of the training, and before that, I actually sat in some of those conferences. So, I know, so I know the importance of it and I know the timeliness of getting this in. And as I understood it, we did have a meeting today, planning and zoning, and we needed to pass the comp plan things in a timely fashion so that you people could act in a timely fashion because this is very important for the city, whether the public understands it or not. I'm pretty sure all of you understand how important it is in order to apply for grants and some of the other incentives that we want. You have to have a plan. You're operating now with a twenty-year-old plan and all of you know how out-of-date a twenty-year-old plan is. And I think if I was sitting in the morning trying to decide what to do with people like you, I would think if they don't care more than that about their city, why should we throw money to them? You need to have a current plan to keep things going and it needs to be guided by the citizen input and that's why you have boards such as the board I serve on. Now, I, I feel bad about what happened at our meeting today, which is why I chose to speak out and show you what happened because I know that you need to get this in. You're applying for grants, the city is waiting to apply for things to have an accurate comp plan. So, we went with the intent of passing that we have been working with SWIPCO the same as you have, go through these things and we basically, I think, had all of our ducks in a row. And when it came up for a vote, I made the motion to approve it. And I don't know what the problem was, I'm not even going to really guess for sure what the problem is, I can only speculate. However, I made the motion to approve, there was no second. Other people sitting there did not second it. So, you know what happens when there is no second. There is no further discussion. I could not even ask them, what is wrong? Why don't you like this? What do we need to do? The chairman, I think, you know, he was probably at his wit's end at that point himself and so he just said, there is no second, so we cannot continue discussion. So, we went on, on the agenda and then adjourned. Well, my understanding was that we needed to get ours planned, that's what Danny had explained from SWIPCO, we needed to get, we needed to approve it, it needed to come to you people so that you could approve it in a timely fashion.
Can we, can we ask you to continue maybe when we talk about the end of the, towards the end, a little bit more questions in detail? All right, appreciate it, Karen.
So, anyway, that's a result, that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you very much. And Jim Hoskinson, with regard to pedestrians.
First of all, thanks for letting me do this. It's kind of nice just being able to come out in blue and talk about things. And actually, I want to talk about two different genders, but they do tie in. One is pedestrian safety in and around Red Oak and one-way streets. So, I have a lot of experience as a pedestrian, as I walk about six hundred miles a year in Red Oak, but I'm confused about one-way streets. Many years ago, I asked a Red Oak police officer and he stated, all one-way streets in Red Oak are one lane unless separated by a solid white line at intersections for turns going straight. So, in conversations with long-term residents, their belief is that they're all two lanes, including the square. So, I did an informal survey on Red Oak Talk of the Town, which had over seventy-five comments and almost unanimously saying they're all two lanes. So, either the policeman was wrong or everybody else is wrong. So, I'm, I'm sure there is going to be discussions following the piece of assessment when the report comes out, but I, for one, would like clarity on the number of lanes on the square and how it affects pedestrian safety. And I'm probably not alone when traveling to new places and how confusing multi-lane roundabouts are. And if the square is truly two lanes, we essentially have an unmarked roundabout made even more confusing with cars parking in and out and pedestrians crossing. Something needs to change. So, per Iowa state law, pedestrian has the right of way at the intersections where there are no traffic lights, whether the crosswalk is marked or unmarked. Essentially, that means traffic should yield to pedestrians at every corner of the square. Now, I'm not going to risk that. I'm not going to risk walking out there thinking the car is going to stop it, but essentially, that's the law. So, in the meantime, before the discussions start, I would like to see pedestal signs that say state law yield to pedestrians within the crosswalk. So, there'd be four of them on the square at the current crosswalks. And I would like to see one or two at Eighth and Summit where there's a lot of kids walking to school. And at this point in time, over the last two weeks, I've never seen a crossing guard there.
All right.
I have to say.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Number eight, consent agenda, take a motion to approve the minutes of the city council meeting on November fourth of 2024. Isaac.
Sergeant.
Peter Frank. Roll call. Freida.
Yes.
Isaac.
Here.
Peter Frank.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Number nine is the November eighteenth, 2024, city claims and October 2024 warrants. All the claims is in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-one cents. I didn't write the ones down. So, I take a motion to approve or?
I'm trying to get this pulled back up, I pushed the wrong button. I'll move to per city claim.
One second. Bills, Bradley, roll call for the discussion, roll call. Isaac.
Yes.
Peter Frank.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, number ten, I am opening a public hearing for two items. One is the proposed amendment to the Red Oak Downtown Urban Renewal Area and two is proposed development agreement with Fountain Squidward LLC. They're both related. Are there any public comments with regard to either of those items? And I guess I should make note, five forty-three. Do we have any public comments online?
No.
Okay, did we receive any in City Hall?
Nope.
All right, so at five forty-three, I will close the public hearing unless you'd like me to leave it open for a specific time, Lisa. All right, so close the public hearing. And then I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution twenty-two four dash seventy-one to approve the urban renewal plan amendment for the Red Oak Downtown Urban Renewal Area. Thank you, Lisa, for all of the information you shared about this.
I can just briefly explain there that in order to have consideration for a specific development agreement, you first have to have the urban renewal plan appropriately named within the plan. And so, this will call out that at that five oh three address on Third Street, that you are looking to give a tax incentive for a project. And then the second phase of that, the next vote, would be considerations specifically to Fountain Square LLC, which Mr. Randall Wilson is here and he has had an opportunity to review the development agreement himself and did email me back saying that he concurred that it was okay. So, it'd be a two-phased approval and then the incentive in there is a hundred thousand dollars over three years, which was the amount that you committed in the catalyst plan its application that you were successful in receiving.
So, we can make a motion to approve both in the same. Okay, I will move to approve the resolution to approve the urban renewal plan amendment and the resolution approving development agreement with Fountain Square LLC.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve both, resolution twenty-two four seventy-one and twenty-two four seventy-two. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, Bills, is there any discussion? Okay, with none, I would take a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Freida?
Yes.
Isaac?
Here.
Peter Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
All right. Now, we will move line item seventeen, which is the consideration to engage legal counsel for the future TIF incentive for Nelson Boylan Lorette Funeral Home. And again, Lisa, appreciate the content for the council for them to understand this. So, and I do say that the Lorettes are here, if we have any further questions for them.
So, right now, the Lorettes have purchased the land that is out on Ratliff Road, just to the north, north, on the north side of Ratliff, to the west of Eighth Street. I put a yellow X in your packet on page forty-six indicating that lot. They also own the small strip that I believe, prior to my arrival here, you sold them the land, we actually, I think, sold it to Larry and Marty that then transferred to Lorette so that they would not have that strip in the middle. Then they own one more lot over to the east of that. The intention right now is to be able to fit the facility that they're looking to rebuild after their fire on that parcel and that everything can fit adequately on there. There is only one year left, so you had your original TIF district, which was on the north end in nineteen ninety. There was an amendment number one to the TIF that included land to the north, which is this land, and then there was another one that was in two thousand, and then there was another amendment in two thousand and five. The downtown TIF, I believe, was in nineteen ninety-seven. And so, because this is not a blighted area and was not prior to nineteen ninety-five, it falls off after a certain number of years. And so, what you have the option to do, obviously, if we only have one year left within this urban renewal area to be able to have incentives come from it, that's not very helpful to them in building their funeral home, if that's what they would like to do. They've indicated to me that the only way that they'll be able to make this work is to have some sort of tax incentives. We're not voting today to be able to decide exactly what that is, but in good faith, for me to engage the attorneys to start this process, I think it would be appropriate for the council to vote that you would like to engage the firm of Dorsey Whitney as our legal counsel with regard to urban renewal. And what we would be looking at then is removing these parcels, most likely all three of their parcels from the current urban renewal area, which would take it out a year before its expiration, and then you create it as a separate amendment and then they would be able to capture the full, we would be able to capture the full twenty years, not that most incentives are twenty years, they're usually ten, but you have the ability to capture that and then you have those first couple of years where you don't actually start capturing it until they've built the facility. But then they would be able to negotiate with us on some number of years with a discount on taxes that would be rebated to them.
Well, we can only do ten on our own. We have to have county and school approval to go over ten years, is that correct?
I've never seen that, but, no, I don't think so. It's just usually it's ten years.
But you just said twenty.
The capturing of the revenue comes over twenty years. Sometimes, like when you create it, we create it now, the tax revenue doesn't come for a couple of years because they build it and it's January one, so you have twenty years.
Can we also pull out the whole area above that to the north and the corner lot for future development?
We can look at for whatever purpose we want, if there's things that are in it that are going to expire and look at what you want to do.
That whole area has been preliminary plotted for housing, is why I ask.
So, so you can add those or you can add them as they go, or we can look at that. Then in order to engage, and I think that, you know, they're obviously here, if you have any questions for the Lorettes, but most importantly, I think, you know, they're getting ready to make a decision if this is something that they want to engage or if they want to proceed with the development and it's important to them, in order to do that, that we would be willing to negotiate this with them. And there's really nothing that we can do successfully with the current status of that area. So, I've confirmed with legal counsel, I've at least engaged them preliminarily just to make sure that I understood correctly that we can take it out and then we create it as a new amendment and then we have the number of years to capture. Everything that, you know, again, it's not really my place to engage them, but I think all of you have at least had some conversation to, to know that this is on the table and if anybody has any questions for them about the project, they have submitted to me their lands, which I included in your packet, two of them, there's lots of other pages, but this would at least show you that the facility is ninety, just under ninety-three hundred square foot for the actual proposed funeral home, shows adequate parking. I had just a very preliminary review of it by SWIPCO at the end of last week, just to make sure that we didn't see any major issues, not having them until they actually applied for the permit officially. Not going to have them review all the different building codes, but we had a couple of questions that they're, they were able to, to provide. For example, in the code, it talks about how many people can be seated in the main, what they call auditorium, is how they refer to it, and is the parking then adequate, which it was. Had a couple of other questions that they answered and so, from a preliminary perspective, we're good when it comes to the facility and being able to approve it as a physical plan. And then I think it would be appropriate, like I said, if the council's willing to go ahead and enter the urban school area, that we engage Dorsey Whitney and see how.
I, I think, I think we need to move forward with this because I'm looking downtown where they had, the Lorettes had their place and then the other facility that we have in town, there's, that is hard to park down there, anytime that we have a funeral or a funeral service. It's very hard to park down there and we need updated facilities for them, for, just for our people in town here. And I think we need to move forward with it and a newer facility would be beneficial to our city and for our people. I mean, this is, this is a service that we just need to have there.
It's a critical and essential service.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to engage Dorsey, but yes, they did come with the incentive for Nelson Boylan Lorette Funeral Home.
I'll second.
Okay, Bradley and Freida.
And I'd like to, I'd like to also commend Don Brian Lorette for their business in Red Oak and what they've gone through with their buy and everything that, proceeding forward to, you know, even make this possible is wonderful for the city. Thank you. Yes.
Well, I'd like to add on today to say, you know, what a great family to have in our community. You're all very involved and engaged and, you know, too bad everybody's not like you guys. I have one question. If we're going to pay money to have this TIF district established, I think that we should do what the mayor says and just have the whole thing done instead of coming back and revisiting it if we have something else that's going to go in there, let's just reestablish this whole area as a TIF district. That's my recommendation. Instead of just doing the funeral area, let's do the whole area.
But we can decide that later on.
All you're doing right now is yes.
Yeah, no, I get that, but I just wanted to put that in there.
Yep, okay. All right, any other discussion? Roll call. Isaac.
Yes.
Peter Frank?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Freida?
Yes.
All right, now we're going to go back up to fourteen. This is our third and final reading of ordinance number six thirty-nine for the floodplain management. And again, this, these were additions or changes that were suggested by Jason with the FEMA. Does anybody need that explained again?
I move to approve the third and final reading.
Okay, Freida.
I'll second.
Bills, any discussion? Roll call. Isaac?
Yes.
Peter Frank?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
All right, number fifteen is resolution twenty-two four dash seventy-three to appoint, this is for the appointment of Julie Wagner, who's replacing Deb Terry on the library board. This is a term to expire, I believe it's July of twenty twenty-six. June thirty of twenty twenty-six. There we go, yep.
What page are we on?
It is forty-one. And also, I want to thank Lisa for numbering the pages.
Yes, that helps.
It's fabulous.
If I can get my fasteners to work, right?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Bills?
I'll second.
Bradley, any discussion? Roll call. Peter Frank?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Freida?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
All right, number sixteen, this is resolution twenty-two four dash seventy-four. This is approval on the Woodland Hills subdivision for electric service and streetlight installation costs as well as substantial completion extension of date without penalty. Lisa, so you obviously remember that you borrowed general allegation dollars in the amount of three point seven million dollars back earlier this year. Partion of it was for a fire pumper truck and the amount of one million dollars, which left two point seven million dollars for the townhome project. When you bid that out, the bids were substantially less than what you thought they were, which is good. And on page forty-two of the packet, I not only confirmed with JEO, that is our engineers and inspector on the project, that with all of the change orders, there haven't been very many, but on the change orders that you've had on the barcom contract, that it's the one point six three three million dollars referenced on page forty-two. In addition, there was the design and build fees for JEO and then the construction services or the inspection. So, I asked them to confirm what those amounts would be and I included those in there, that the design and bidding was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars and then there's a amount not to exceed of one sixty-five for being out in the field. They're hoping that there will be a slight underrun of that amount. The point of me getting those numbers to you is that where we're at right now is that when JEO bid it out somehow, it was not included in the city's work that we were talking about electric. And so, we unfortunately did not have conduit installed under the road, it can be bored, which is not a problem, but there were no actual arrangements made at the time to work with Mid-American to get the conduit installed and then for the location of the streetlights and the purchase of those. So, I am waiting for the numbers from Mid-American. I'm guessing it'll be somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars is my guess, if you kind of compare other projects. That would include the streetlights and the installation and then we have to hire a contractor to install the conduit. We'll be getting those locations from Mid-Am based somewhere they're going to install different things. And so, those are costs that the city is required to incur if we're going to proceed, which we obviously need electricity out there. And so, I would like permission from the council to be able to proceed with that. I reached out to some of the firms that I thought might be able to install the conduit, I haven't gotten anybody back yet, and I'm still waiting for Mid-Am to get me the estimate. Then, as people hook up, there will be credits back. It's not that it's going to pay for everything, but you do get credits as people come online. And so, at some point, we will get some of those dollars back, but there's no guarantee as to when.
The way I understood that, the way that, I can't remember the fellow's name, but the way I understood it was that we would get a large share of that money back.
Correct. I'm just saying it's not dollar for dollar that you spend.
And just to point out that the actual cost that was incurred by Barcom is actually less than what we had originally thought.
Right.
I'm surprised this.
What's the estimate for the contractor installed, do you know?
I'm guessing it'll be some, oh, you mean the conduit? The conduit or the Mid-Am price?
The Mid-Am price.
I'm guessing it'll be close to a hundred thousand.
Okay, that, that's for the streetlights itself or the installation?
For the streetlights and putting in, like, we would install, we would pay someone separately to put conduit in, then add your paint to pull the wires through, install the streetlights and put in the transformers for then, on the backside of the transformers, the developers then tie it to that.
The streetlights is out of the separate cost.
That'll be part of the system.
Part of it, yeah.
He hasn't given us the price, but I'm just saying it's not like it's twenty thousand dollars.
So, it goes through the whole development, phase one, that crack.
This is for phase one.
Phase one.
We've had a little discussion about gas on phase two, but we don't have gas or electric on phase two.
This will be the electric in phase two.
This is electric.
This will be the electric in the whole.
Yes.
The entire project. The only thing that, what's that?
This should be for the whole entire project.
The entire project. The, the only thing that is in question right now is whether or not there's going to be gas in the second phase area.
So, basically, we're at one point, let's just, even if you round it off to two million dollars.
So basically we're at one point, let's just, even if you round it off to two million dollars, so you're looking at seven hundred thousand dollars. Of what you originally intended to borrow. So we are still well within the boundaries that you had set for what you were going to spend. Once we get through all the bills, then we'll need to have a conversation about how we're going to spend the rest of that money. Obviously, it's not going to be on this project. And so, um, I again checked with bond council and. Chip at Northland, we will just have some sort of resolution type action. But we need to make sure all bills are paid and pulled before we look at what that dollar amount is. And when you borrow. Geo money, you have three years to spend it, so we have plenty of time to decide how that'll.
So we have any idea of the status of the fire truck?
I think it's still well over a year, yeah, plus out.
Yeah.
All righty. So the resolution that I drafted would be approving. Being able to. For me to be able to go and engage with regard to. Hiring these, Mid-Am and a contractor.
And the completion extension?
Correct. And then the second item that's included in the resolution is that last Friday was their deadline for substantial completion. They could have kind of crammed it all in there, but it was so muddy after the rain that we had that it didn't make sense to do things like seeding it. And so it's really to our benefit to extend this. They had a five hundred dollar per day penalty, everything passed last Friday. So when we had our update, uh, the mayor and Brian were both there and. The three of us all concurred that we would bring forth to the city council. Uh, what type of extension they thought was reasonable. Their request was through December second. So if you were to adopt resolution twenty-four seventy-four as presented. It would be extending November fifteenth to December second with no financial penalty to them during that time. And then it would be authorizing that we can use those two thousand twenty-four bond proceeds towards the electric. Cost being paid to Mid-Am and some contractor that I can find to install the kind of.
It's my opinion that, uh, you know, their overrun, part of that was due to the, you know, bad weather. I mean, they. Couldn't pour concrete, couldn't do much excavation when it's raining for weeks on end. And then they were very, uh, they're also very cooperative with us when it came to hauling dirt and. You know, all the special concessions that we asked for on the way. So I, I have no issue at all.
They've been great to work with.
Yep, yep, they've been a great company.
And the storm, um, sewer.
Yep.
We weren't pleased with, so they redid it. We did our final punchless walkthrough on Friday, no, I'm sorry, Thursday with staff. Uh, both Chris and Clint were out there with us and then J E O, Scott was from there. So. We walked through and they have a, a list of things that they'll have to, nothing's major, but. In addition, in your packet is a letter from J E O that they would confer with the changes that we're recommending here.
With that said, I'd like to, um. Approve the resolution for the two thousand twenty-four bond. Um, issue to proceed with that approval and also with the like you service the streetlight installation costs. And also, uh, being the substantial completion extension. From November fifteenth to December second to, um, finish the, um, extension, uh, to. Finish the completion without penalty.
Thank you. Great certification. It's our second.
I'll second.
Right off. Is there any further discussion? Okay, welcome. Bradley.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Right off.
Yes.
Isaac.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Mayor, can I add one thing? I do want to update the council. They submitted their first building permit for one of the southern parcels that would have a five unit. Townhome on it. Um, I need to email them after the meeting. When I was gone for a couple of days, I didn't have an opportunity to. Um, but I have discovered that the way that you rezoned it from R two to R three was done improperly. If you recall, that we had the same situation on Market Street. Not in the last year adopted rezoning appropriately with ordinances and you have not held public hearings at the council level. I spoke to our attorney Bree today. The planning and zoning did appropriately hold a public hearing. And so what I wanted to talk to her about was whether she felt like because of the gap in time. From when planning and zoning recommended approval, that if we needed to start over with planning and zoning. And both of us are comfortable saying that we can proceed with just council redoing their action. And so as soon as I can get the information for both the Market Street parcel. I also found another one in the planning and zoning minutes, um. Just actually.
Explain to me what we did wrong about that.
So in one case on Market Street, you adopted the rezoning by resolution. And in the case of Woodland Hills, you just made a motion. And in order to rezone, you have to have an ordinance.
I see.
Which requires three readings. Yeah, before you suspend the rules. So because this is kind of a technicality.
Yeah.
I'm going to most likely recommend that you, because you went through a process before, that you hold your public hearing and then. Suspend the rules. The other one that I found that was considered in September of twenty-three and from planning and zoning. Was four oh one East Reed. So I'm guessing if you did them on the same night as Market Street, you probably didn't do that one correctly. There's something to look back. I don't know if anybody remembers. I don't even know what that is. I literally found it on my hot minute before getting here, so.
That would be like, uh, where ESPN Clark got, so isn't that your building, Randall?
Four oh one East Reed. Is that, um. That's what I was.
Yeah, I remember that now. Yeah, so he could do a insight. He's done many stories inside.
Yes. The other one that I find weird is that in the advertisement in the public notice, there's one on Hammond Street that never made the agenda of planning and zoning. So I don't know if that's. I'll look into it.
What's address on that one?
Um, somehow I stapled it upside down.
Just curious.
It is one oh seven West Hammond. This is at least in, on the computer, I can see that it was. At least intended to be in the notice. And that was supposed to go from C one to R two.
That was, is that place? That place, yeah.
Yeah, no.
But it never was on any planning and zoning agenda.
That would not be one oh seven.
No, it's there with the other house and that other one.
That's the, that's the blue house right behind the old.
It's the blue house. Isn't that where?
The blue house got tore down, but that, that would have been.
Rezoned it for storage. Shit, I remember.
No, but it went from.
That was one oh one, that was one oh. I don't know, one oh seven's on the, would be on the north side of the street. And I don't know what that would be. One oh seven would be on the north side. It'd be like Commingo. Be like Commingo.
It's the house right by Commingo.
Yes.
Oh, it's the house by, yeah, it's the one right by.
Something about, there's a little piece of sliver there. There was a sliver there.
Yeah.
That they're already maintaining. It was that. It was a sliver between the two.
Between Commingo and the house.
Yeah.
As I looked it up on.
Basically.
On what this.
Anyway, so we're going to need to put an ad in the paper for one of our December meetings and. Get this, what I'm working on with SWIPCO right now for the town, at least is. What we can let them proceed with, even if it's zoned R two instead of R three, so that we don't hold up them getting started. Okay, got it. All right. Do like nineteen, twenty, twenty point oh one before we do any recon? That's what I was thinking. I should have, I should have chosen to move that too, so. We'll come back to eighteen. We'll come back to eighteen so we can continue discussing the reconification ordinances. So then nineteen is discuss and set. The date for the council and strategic, staff strategic planning session and any action as necessary. So. We've got all of these plans that we've done and when Lisa started, we had talked about. Wanting to do a strategic planning so that we have a vision, a mission statement and then priority goals. And I feel that we need to include staff in doing this, um, and it needs to be like. Longer than a half a day, um. So.
What, what day of the week?
So then, then that. We're trying to do it while Adam was on break. Yes, we're trying to do it while Adam's on break, but do you go back to school on January third?
You think I'd look that far?
Think the school calendar, we look, you can look.
Yeah, that would be on the school calendar.
So there is a retreat camp that's beautiful and it's a great location. Uh, it'd be very inexpensive. It would be offsite and this would be something where to get staff, obviously to get all of the staff. Doing it on a Saturday or Sunday, we would have to pay overtime to everyone. So my suggestion was to look at a day. During the holiday break so that you're able to participate. Um, and the dates that this, that would be available is not the thirtieth of December, so.
Yeah, the school calendar says the third.
It's, it's the third, see, so the only dates that it's available would be December twenty-third, which is a Monday. And I think we have a council meeting that night. I don't, I don't think anyone should do stuff like before Christmas. No, and then the other date is January second, which I believe is a Thursday.
I can't do it then, sisters and everybody. Just so you know, I have a, um, a conference room where I rent my building. It's really nice. We can use that anytime too for all things.
Will it hold fifty plus people?
What?
Fifty plus people?
Oh, fifty people? I thought it was just for the council, I'm sorry.
And staff.
Oh, no, that won't work then. Where were you thinking?
I was thinking the, a, a place that I just learned about. Like Creighton Retreat Camp.
Do we want to go out of town though? I don't think so.
I was trying to go offsite in a place that's serene and beautiful.
Yeah, but the Witcher?
Yeah.
You're taking a chance.
Yeah.
Put him out the Benz out that Bo has.
Yeah, that probably would.
We've got a lot of options.
He's kind of ready by then. I would just suggest that would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be good, because we could have a meal.
We do the thirtieth, go back to the thirtieth if we live for another place. What's your? Would the thirtieth work if we were at a different place in town?
You just set it up, I'll be there.
Thirtieth works for me if it's in town.
Yeah, I could use the thirtieth.
Okay, all right. Plus we'd need to reach out.
The Monday, the Monday.
We'll reach out to Bo and see if that's available and if so, then we'll proceed forward with that. I'm working on a. Facility.
I think that'd be a great place and he's a new business. I think we need to take advantage. I mean, he's got all his tables and chairs in now. Then we can have a catered. I think that'd be fine.
And then we start off the new year with vision mission priorities. And I'll clarify, because I think Lisa's learning, we've got a lot of things going and we need to prioritize now. So, all right.
You're like, I have to do the thirtieth?
Yes.
Don't forget my birthday, could you?
Well, good, just for you.
Have you forty? Turn forty, yeah.
All right, perfect, thank you. Uh, number twenty is summary of the downtown assessment sessions and the next steps. Want to talk about that? Yes, so we received the PowerPoint presentation. They updated it, so I'd like to put that out online for people to see and then. You know, maybe post something on Facebook to everybody's, you know, like the Chamber. M C D C and the city's page, just to kind of get the information out there for those people that were not at the luncheon. We certainly appreciate, there were probably. Close to a hundred people that came through the doors on Wednesday and Thursday to meet with our visitors. For people that don't know what it was, basically for twenty-five hundred dollars, a community can sign up through I E D A. To be able to have these people come into our community and really just help us assess the strengths. Of our downtown and things that we can do to improve upon it. Not necessarily that we call them weaknesses, but just ways to make it. As best as it can be. And then we had eighty people almost at the lunch and so for those that were able to be there, it was very informative. They gave a lot of. Um, good information. So that would be the PowerPoint that we'd be able to place online for people to be able to share and seeing what they talked about. And then it's usually one to two months where they'll give us a report. That's typically a thirty to fifty page report with ideas. They've called me back with a few questions and trying to kind of help. Them with the information that they want to make sure is accurate when they include that. And so they were very impressed with our community. Very impressed with everyone that was willing to participate. I'm thankful to the committee that. Was willing to help with that. And then, of course, the Wilson Center for letting us use their facility for those two days. And I might say that those eighty people that came, only five people got up and left after two hours. Over a lunch hour. So that says to me that they were engaged. In what they were hearing, because for that many people to stick around that long was impressive to me. And they came up with some really unique ideas and some things for us to really think about. And they really. Kind of said that the city council needs to consider a few things for policy, which you guys love right now. I was very impressed with the process. I was impressed by the number of people that attended those. Focus groups is what I call it. And I know the youth really appreciated being invited. To be, uh, participate in it. And they sent me a cute little text telling me how much they appreciated and how fun it was. So. Uh, I think the kids' ideas were also well received, so. Uh, I appreciate all of those involved in the committee, all of Lisa's work, our staff's work. In it and obviously appreciate the people that partic- that did it and came from Des Moines and their businesses, so. Awesome. Anything else? Anybody else have any statements about that that you want to share? I think once we get the report, then we'll reengage our conversation and kind of see where that goes, but. And that report will include kind of an action plan too and timeline. So from at least looking at what I've seen them do, so.
I agree with you that I thought the meeting was very productive and it was a good, um. All the people in the community that were really, well, really stayed and had, they had a lot of, um, input, I think.
It was a great location to have it at too. So very big thanks to the Wilson for doing that.
Yeah. Absolutely, thank you. All right, so then we're going to bounce back up. Well, I guess number twenty twenty-one, um, is the comp plan, um. Now, maybe update, I did a few things today. So after, I was still in route to get home, but the mayor updated me and so I did speak with. Chairperson Bill. Warren Barker. Yes, he was still, he was, as Karen indicated, surprised and not really clear. So I've spoken to Danielle. There was a reference to having the FEMA floodplain map within the comp plan. So that's obviously easy to add. There are some references on older references to some of the budget numbers and debt limitations. So I had had, um, the most up to date capacity that we have to borrow geo debt and when our current geo debt is. Compared to the limit, so I sent her that. Um, in speaking to Bill, what I think I'm going to do is reach out to a couple other of the commissioners and find out what it is that we need to do. Um, because the chairperson is going to be gone during the December meeting, they had discussed that if there was nothing they needed to do, that they would skip it. Which would then mean that they weren't going to meet again until January, which would mean that we're two months out till they even revisit this. And so I intend to ask them. Uh, what we can do to get them, you know, if there's some uncomfortableness as to why they didn't make a second to Karen's motion. And then, um, I'll have those conversations and then I think it's appropriate for the mayor to email the commission and say, I am requesting that you have a special meeting. Um, ASAP. Yeah, my goal would be that we could get this on the agenda by the last December meeting for sure. So we can at least. Right, and I did confirm, like, it is important with regard to grants and things like that. Um, the mayor specifically referenced our wastewater and applications to the USDA and things like that and. It is not going to hold that up. So I emailed Snyder. So not that we want to prolong anything, but we're not at an absolute. It's not like we can't submit that. We'll be probably spring when we get stuff back from the USDA and. There is no requirement as a part of that to have the comp plan amended. So not that we should not. Get at it and have them reconvene their meeting. And the thing is, the plan, once adopted, the plan could be amended. And we can always post the current amendments to the website. And then, um, Danny said that she will provide Lisa with a Excel spreadsheet of the action plans. So that you can easily update those to provide updates to the council and to the community. Um, if you want to post that to the website or whatever too, so, um. And we had advertised as appropriate, as required for the comp and public hearing. Did anybody, Karen, you're still, did anybody from the public, this is just, I think, Mr. Wilson, you were there, correct? Was there anybody else?
No.
Because I know I didn't get any comments, so it would have been that one, so. Yeah. But it was advertised for people to come and give input. The council is not required to hold a public hearing. With regard to your adoption of the comp plan. It's kind of at the P and Z level. Is it just a resolution adoption? Yeah. I don't know if Karen has any, or anybody any questions, but I think. From Bill's perspective, you know, he didn't understand and I said, all right, well, I'm just going to reach out to. Pick a few of them and see. Where to go next, so we get it done before January. And I have no problem reaching out and asking for that special meeting, so. Hey, Doki? Did you mention that to Bill? Yes, I said that, that would come after. I see what we can do to get some level of comfort for people to make a second. Yes, I said that, that would come after, I see what we can do to get some level of comfort for people to make a second.
Okay, great, thank you for doing that. Alright, we don't really need any action on that, that was just discussion, so, um, let's go back up to eighteen, discussion on the recodification ordinances. We wanna start working through some of these, or?
Do all of you have things that you learned or want to ask about specific, or do you just wanna go through my comments, like, what do you? I don't have a ton of comments on.
On section twenty-five, you talking about?
Well, just in, when I gave you this first twenty-five, I have some handwritten notes on here.
Yeah, you're talking, the only ones I saw was on the city administration part, really, there were.
I think there was a couple.
A couple others, I gotta get back to that page.
So that, this is, yeah, that original packet you'll have to go back to, but.
Yeah.
Um, I just noted, this was not a thing we need to decide, but on page three of those, it's page three with regard to the code, that's where it says, whenever an officer or employee is required or authorized to do an act by a provision of this code, the provision shall be construed as authorizing performance by a regular assistant subordinate or duly authorized designee, so that's the thing that where we started meeting that I talked about with the, the thing that we changed with regard to the cemetery superintendent, I do think we have a catch-all that when someone has the authority as a department head or someone like that, that there is a provision in the code that people have the ability to delegate work.
Yeah, it, the problem with that one was, it was specific in the code that he had to be there, that was.
Right.
Right, but it says whenever you're required, so. And it says to do something as an act of this code, so, I think it was so good that we cleaned it up. Um, on page four, this is just gonna be a question for them, but I just wanted to know if these dollar amounts in our standard penalty of section one point one four, if those are the highs and lows that are state code. If the answer is no, then we'll come back and have another conversation on that.
Did I, did I get that? Did you like write your, like, do your write-ups and send?
In my packet that I sent you, I.
Down below, all of that is all the.
Got it, I only printed off the agenda, sorry.
If you go back to the packet that I sent, or you get it on the website.
Got it, got it, got it, got it.
It was my easiest way to just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make some notes.
Cause I do think we need to discuss whether we want to do the, like, the terms and the wards and such, those, those ones, we gotta figure out. And I do think we need to.
It'll be a referendum type of stuff, so. Sounds like.
Yeah, so they. Yeah, okay.
And, in the case of a referendum, you know, you're gonna have to decide if there's other people, if you think that you want the mayor's term to be four years, or you wanna switch to at-large, if those are both, so I think the recod company thought that the at-large thing could be just a ordinance by the council, but what was the community that just didn't? Yes, so they sent me, and theirs was a referendum. So, to me, the point would be, is even if the council wants to initiate it, are you gonna be the ones that go circulate the petition, or are you gonna look to community members that perhaps are like-minded to that idea and have someone willing to go and circulate a petition that you then present to the council? And then, looking at the timing, my guess would be, you probably don't wanna pay for a special election, and so, I would think that you would wanna try and time this that if you're gonna have it be a referendum vote, that you do it next November, a year from now, and then, the mayor's term is still two more years. Then if anything changes, it's all post-November twenty-five. Otherwise, you have to pay for a special election.
But would that open it up to at-large in twenty-five, or would you have to wait until twenty-seven?
I would think you would do it, the, the referendums would be in twenty-five, so everybody's as-is at the next election.
I'll tell you, that'd be in twenty-seven, so then it wouldn't change anything until twenty-seven essentially.
I think so, I mean, you can do it sooner, but I think once you circulate the petition, we have so many days to act, and then you put it before.
Can we do an online petition?
Well, you can't do it legally that way.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a cir-, I don't even know, I mean, again, I haven't researched it, but usually it's based on like the last whatever election, they'll take how many people voted and whatever's prescribed by law, and it's usually like fifteen percent or something. Um, but the point would be, is if someone goes and circulates it now, and then there's no local election, then we're gonna pay. And like, I know, in my last city that was half the size, it cost us three thousand dollars for an election. So, assuming there's some correlation to how big your people group is, we're talking a lot of money. So, I wouldn't, I don't know, I don't know if that's the best use of dollars, if you want it, if you think that's a good use of funds, then you could circulate it sooner and call for a special election. Or do you just wanna leave as-is and have it be in November twenty-five? But someone would have to circulate the petition.
Do you think it's necessary?
For the wards or for the mayor term to be changed at large, I mean, I, the at-large.
The key is, if, it's just hard, because you could have two great people that live in one ward, and they're both interested, but if only one of them can win, and then you could have a ward that's left with nobody on the ballot, because it's based on geography, and that's kinda what we said, in a community this size, are you really do you really have different things that you prioritize because of where you live? Are you truly voting differently because you live in one versus two versus three? Cause that's, you know, when you get in bigger cities, that's really what it is, like, you have to represent your.
I think we might in this town.
I don't think you're too far off either, that's true.
I would say there's a difference.
It makes it easier to get people to run.
Ward one and.
And the other thing is, like, if you think Tim is doing a good job, and you're in his ward, then someone that wants to run doesn't run, well, you're the at-large, so you're a bad example, so we'll just pick Brian's doing it.
Well, I mean, what makes us, I'm like, what, twelve houses from you?
Well, it's just like the example I brought up the last time was just previous to this election, it was myself and Scott Keith and Janice Lester, we're all three in Ward One. And I don't think any of us ever voted for anything that was going to favor our ward.
Right.
The two at-large were the same.
Yes, Janice and I were both at-large, and Scott was the Ward One representative, and I didn't see anything that was swayed one way to favor our particular section of town.
I can't think of any issues.
I don't know why it would.
And I can't think of any issues that we've addressed ever, or even before I came on, I was just out in the audience listening, that would be affected by that.
Who gets the signatures for the petition then? Do they, did, we just put the petition at the courthouse, and then people come in?
Now, you have to do it just like you do it for when you run for office.
Can you do both things at the same time, or no?
Well, I, I don't know about all this, I mean, I would think yes, you can do it at the same time, but it may have to be two separate petitions, like, do you wanna sign this?
I can see that, but if you're gonna do one, you might as well do both at the same time, if you were to go down that road, to me, it would seem more expedient to do the wards to help for the next election cycle, if that's the direction that we decided to go.
Certainly go to Jill at the auditor's office and ask what the special election cost would be. But again, I don't think the council can just come forward to say, we're gonna put this on there, I think you have to have somebody circulate it, not that you're precluded from being the circulators, but it may make more sense as the voting five carry it on. To kind of find like-minded citizens who agree with the idea of at least putting it before the voters, and again, it doesn't mean just because you circulate the petition, you support wards are at-large, or two or four years for the mayor, but it's just saying, is this worthy of a vote of the people? So, do we wanna have me ask the auditor what it would be for a special election? To try and have this done prior to, the key is the next election of.
I don't, I don't see the need for that.
It doesn't hurt to get the information, it doesn't mean we make the decision, but it would be nice to know now, and then can decide if we wanna do it, what the timeline looks like. And then you would know, yeah, exactly, if that was the case, I don't think it hurts to look into it.
If we did a special election, that term, if, if you did it for both the wards and the mayor terms, that would change, that would augment the opportunity then sooner for.
Would affect, if we did it soon enough, it would affect the twenty-five election.
Yes, it would.
But again, you have to back up the whole calendar, because there's a blackout period, they call it, before, um, before an election, you can't present stuff, because you can't, like, you know, thirty days before an election, have another election, so there's, they call blackout periods, I think.
Yeah.
So you'd have to look at the timeline and say, alright, if we're gonna do this in spring or summer, before you have to circulate your papers for twenty-five. And then you need enough time after the referendum, you have the council act, so, I may have to like back up the calendar, but if we're serious about it, then I can ask Jill at the courthouse what the cost would be, and just get a little bit more information.
Sure, I'll bet number four here.
That would be close to it.
So, just finding out if we can vote at the same time, or if it's two petitions, which I am, it's fading, and the cost is. Okay, got it, alright.
On page twenty-one, I just wrote administrator or no, so, some communities do what they call a blanket bond, as opposed to bonding, like the mayor, clerk, and treasurer, so I think what I confirmed with Andy is that our policy is an umbrella, so it's not specific to any individuals. I need to ask, on page thirty-five, under the fiscal management, it talks about depositing funds and investments, I just want to, I kinda thought, like, A C H and electronic funding is, you know, just more prevalent now, and so, I just wanna ask if that's relative to at least chapters one and two.
Quick question, if we have them do something with regard to the, the city treasurer, and they're like on page twenty-three, they, um, reference city treasurer, will they catch that across the board in all the ordinances, or do we need to catch everything?
No, we would just let them know.
Okay, got it, cause there is reference to the city treasurer on page twenty-three of operating procedures. Okay, now, we're at what, page thirty-five?
Yeah, I was just saying, I'm gonna ask them about if there's any relevancy to A C H and electronic funds.
Okay.
Um, so, in your chapter seven oh five, page thirty-six, it puts the responsibility of the budget on city, it's just a quick. Now, the finance officer is responsible for preparation of the budget, it would seem to me that there should be a reference to my position in there.
Yeah, yeah.
So whether we say in coordination with the city administrator.
Yes.
Um, and then under number three, same thing, the finance officer shall submit.
Yes.
Maybe that was referenced, I mean, you've had a city administrator for a long time, but, so I would say that in number one and number three, there'd be some reference to the administrator.
Uh-huh, and those two.
Yeah, it would be the finance officer in coordination with the administrator, or something like that.
I agree.
And then, this whole max levy thing is all different. You know how they changed that last year, so I just put a note on there, just making sure that they obviously know about that, but making sure that it's appropriate for our new rules. Cause there's the other, you know, there's like the two public hearings now, we have to get stuff to the county to do their mailer. So that's my reference on thirty-six and thirty-seven, bottom on thirty-six and thirty-seven, just making sure that it's all good.
Okay.
And the same on thirty-eight, I just wrote the word check there, cause it even says here holding your hearing before March thirty-first, which is now April thirtieth, so.
Changed, yeah.
So I noticed that. Um, if you look on page thirty-nine, all cities have this, most cities, I guess, I don't know of any that don't, but where it'll authorize that, um, a clerk or myself can issue checks if we're gonna have a penalty. So like a credit card or something like that, where we're paying, and then we present you with the list of things that got paid in between your meetings. And so, it references on page thirty-nine that the council made a resolution, authorized the clerk to issue checks for immediate payment, which if not paid would result in either a loss of discount, penalty, interest costs. And I don't know that we have a resolution on file, I can say that in practice, we do that. But I just wanted to make sure, that was my note to say, we either need to find that resolution, or just redo it if we can't find it.
Uh-huh, I would agree.
We don't obviously wanna pay based on timeliness of.
We don't wanna pay interest on some.
And the biggest issue becomes when we have three meetings, or three weeks between meetings, when you have the five Mondays.
Yeah, yeah.
Less of an issue when there's two weeks between. So I had that on there, that we need to look at. Um.
Industrial property tax exemptions, do we have anything in there?
No. Pretty much state language. Under urban renewal, I just wanna make sure that all these ordinance numbers and dates are correct, but I think it's correct. As I said, ninety, this is on page forty-nine. Ninety was that original agreement, and then, I know for sure ninety-seven was the downtown, and then that's what I saw was in ninety-five. Two thousand and two thousand and five were the three amendments to the plan. And then, I'm not even sure about this twelve thing, I'll have to look at that. See what that is, but, I think those are correct.
Okay.
Page seventy-seven, we already said that we would include that the airport has the right to do hangars and ag land.
I've got a quick question on the urban rebite page on chapter ten, which is, uh, seventy-one.
Yes.
I don't know what that is, April seventeenth of two thousand, I don't know what that subdivision is.
What page are you on?
That's.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one, which is right after the urban renewal.
Yep, yep.
So, I don't know what that is, if we could.
Does anybody?
Does anybody know what that is?
Higher subdivision, yeah.
Higher subdivision.
So that's the only area we can actually do tax abatement.
I'm not sure where that is.
Yeah.
Seventy-one, but you gotta use the numbers of the print and PDF numbers.
Oh, it's Senate Avenue.
Where?
Senate Avenue.
Senate Avenue.
Oh. There you go.
We had to do it for, um, Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Got it.
We're in higher.
Makes sense.
That makes sense, thank you. Okay. Alright.
So again, page seventy-seven would be.
Yep.
And then on page eighty, I just wanna make sure that we're following what it says in the Hotel Motel. Probably gonna work with Janice on that, she's super active in helping that group.
Yeah.
But I think that we should make sure that what we're doing with that money is how it's.
They've set some, like, new rules too, like, only allow, you know, so many applications, one application from each entity and they'll only award up to ten thousand dollars, I don't know if any of that needs to be in here or not.
Yeah, we'll have to.
But they have set. And she, uh, the council approved of appointing her to be the administrator of it, to continue her role in it. It's, so she's not a part of the membership, that makes it sound.
She did, she does a great job.
She does a fantastic job, yeah, okay.
More than that, and the mayor, obviously, we'll talk about it. Another thing that I guess, um, the compensation would be something that I don't know if you guys wanna talk about, it's not always the most popular thing to talk about, but.
Yes.
There are cities that have increased, either the salary to the mayor and/or the council. Um. And you can do that by a normal ordinance, it's just that it wouldn't go into effect until after you've been reelected.
Yeah.
That's something to think about.
What do other cities are sized in there?
Atlantic, just up there, still fifteen-five.
Where?
Atlantic.
I mean, I will say this is common, because nobody increases something, cause it's just unpopular.
It's unpopular.
It's open with the last time it was changed.
Um, twenty eighteen, I believe.
Yes.
On twenty eighteen?
It was the only item on the agenda.
Yep, yep, I remember that, it was my first things.
And it was thirty, it was thirty-six hundred dollars a year, now it's forty-eight hundred dollars a year. I can tell you, I put a whole lot of hours in.
Doing it for the money?
I didn't even get a penny an hour.
It would adopt, the council would adopt both the change, if you wanted to change the mayor's salary or the council's salary, it's still a regular vote of the council. The key, though, because you're voting on your own salary, is that no one gets it until they're reelected.
Yes.
So if you change the mayor's, she doesn't get it right away, it would be whoever's the mayor, starting Jan- January one of twenty-six. For those council members, if you voted on it in this year, if you got elected in January, to take office January twenty-six, half of the council, or the two or three who's ever up, would get the new salary, and then, so you'd have a split year, or you'd have two years where some are getting the increase and some are not. You know, you have to be reelected.
Yeah.
Just as a.
So you can't, it's so you can't give yourself.
So, we, we put that in, only agenda item for discussion, and then have an approval for.
Or you could put it as part of the recomp.
Is that correct?
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah, I would say this is not consensus for tonight, this would be. It's a bigger deal, and again, like, it's, it's a, what's the reasonable compensation for the time that people put in? And then there's the flip side of like, no one's here to make a big living off of being elected official in a small community.
Well, and there's also the, the thing that some people put in a lot, and some people put in zero, so, you're gonna pay the zero person the same, you're gonna pay the person that pays, that does a lot?
Well, for council, it's per meeting, isn't it, Tom?
Yes, well, you know, Kevin, and once again, I, you know, you don't do this for the money.
Right.
Well, I think we get seventy-three dollars and ten cents a month, I think, something like that.
Yeah, you get forty, isn't it forty per meeting?
Forty per meeting.
Gross, yes. Yeah, yeah, after-tax is seventy-three. Yeah, after taxes, seventy-three dollars and ten cents.
So I mean, if people want, we can certainly put something out there and try to see what other communities are paying, but it's probably all over the board.
Yeah, I know Shenandoah is like six thousand, we're, we're the lowest in our area, I can tell you that.
Yep, so something that they thought will put that on their agenda.
There is the Esterville survey that they do every year. There's thirty-three communities that participate in that, and they provide their wages for all department heads, like our main, actually, all staff. And, 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 and mayor and council, and they also look at their benefits. So it looks at benefits as well, so I, we should be participating in that. Um I would encourage us to anyway. Cuz there's other communities that are our size and they do it every year, so it's a good way to compare. That's actually what, that's what we used to begin to look at our wages.
What's that called, what's that?
Esterville, it's the Esterville Wage Study.
Oh, oh, I thought, I thought it was a regular.
It's just a city that's doing it, that's a standard.
You know, in our ordinances on the mayor, it doesn't even acknowledge the EMA or anything like that. Or like conference board or anything, does that need to be included, any of those things? The county conference board.
What do you mean conference?
So, the conference board sets uh works with the assessor and. Like we're responsible for interviewing the assessor and hiring the assessor and setting wages and.
Automatically, I mean, to me. Puts you on there by your position.
Cuz it's a county ordinance, I don't think we need to have anything in ours.
Yeah, if they're saying that's the mayor that goes on EMA, then yeah, it doesn't have to be me.
And EMA is state law, I mean.
Right, so I don't think you put it in.
Okay, got it.
You just get it by default if that's their rule. So these ones that are for appointment will. Let them know. I also thought it was a little weird about this nuisance thing, number ten on page ninety-two. Issue written order for removal at public expense, any nuisance for which no person can be found responsible. It's listed as the mayor's responsibility.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't recall seeing that in other cities, so. Cuz you would think it would still. Either go through the court system, that it would still have to be, you know, yeah, you had a mayor that was nuisance abatement.
So I probably could have like ordered that one thing that you complain about all the time, I probably could have done that.
Well, wish you were.
Maybe I'd better while. Maybe that's it.
Is that under if we don't have a nuisance officer, or is that reason why that's there?
No idea.
It's probably for the pub- for public safety, I mean, it probably is regarded the public safety, cuz that's one of the main mayor roles of public safety.
Gotcha.
So if that issue that you keep talking about is blocking a intersection and causing, damn, you know.
That's only if.
State of view.
Only if no person can be found responsible liable, if you know who it is, you can't.
Got it.
Sorry.
Got it.
The catch.
Yep.
So under council, I just made the note, like if we were gonna do that large thing, it's on page ninety-five. And then just making it clear here, like I don't know what our practice has been, but it seems to me that in our code. Just so everybody understood that like if I'm, if we're hiring a department head, then that would come before the council at my record versus. Those employees below department heads that you're authorizing the expense and how many people, but then it would be the department head and I. Making selection of those employees.
Yeah, and we still, we are approving their wages.
Yeah, you always have to approve wages.
Yeah.
But if you have wages in there for seven. People in a certain department, then minus the department head that authorizes us to go and fill those positions if somebody resigns and. We're not bringing names before the council.
Got it.
Is how I read them. So on page ninety-seven, I had the certified local government, but I'm gonna make a reference to the historic. Preservation, not eliminating that.
Okay.
And then. You can think about the forty dollars per council meeting, and then the other thing, other governmental meetings, this is on page ninety-seven. At the bottom, other governmental meetings that the council members have been designated to attend, are you guys ever churning in anything other? Or do they pay for anything in the council meetings?
No one's ever told us that we could do that.
Yeah.
Hold you, it's right here.
It's right there.
So maybe we need to think about clarification on that, because what exactly does that mean, it's clearly not just what you go to.
Point, they're designated to like.
Like I'm, like I'm the the ex-official for the chamber, that would be one, and I can't.
But that's not a government meeting, so that's what I don't, I don't really know, I haven't seen that be worded like that before, so.
Would the landfill association be one?
I don't know. Okay.
Perhaps.
That's what I'm thinking, perhaps, cuz it.
That's true.
But I think the other thing I wanna ask is maybe there is something where, when you are appointed to a committee. That you have something that's maybe not as much as a council meeting, but maybe that's a way to compensate, we can ask from a legal standpoint to make sure, but maybe you have. You know, it's become sixty dollars for a council meeting, and if you're appointed to something, not just like, hey, you went to the Lakin Foundation Public. You know, press conference or something, but if you're an MCDC person, if you're a chamber person, if you're, whatever it is, that maybe there is some sort of. We'll just call it committee compensation, that's maybe a little bit less, but. That would be something to consider for.
Or not.
Interesting, but I think we should get clarification on what that wording means.
Treasure run there again. And D U R board, and what are the the other ones that he mentioned? Let me add them, okay.
City clerk, the council shall appoint my majority vote, a city clerk.
I agree.
On page one oh two, there's all this references to like how we handle our documentation. It would seem to me that we would just say whatever the state's retention policy is.
Yes.
Because that.
Absolutely.
Changes at times, and so instead of having all this. And then have that be outdated, I'm gonna ask them if there's a way to just make it a little bit more blanket.
Yep.
New more pages, treasure, yep, who is this, so we're saying it's the clerk, then we just need to make that clear.
Yep. Attorney. And I don't think we have anything for nuisance officer either, do we need that? I don't think so, never mind.
No, I don't think so. Um in the city administrator thing. Um to have the gen- this is number four, under duties, to have the general supervision and direction of the administration of city government and to appoint with approval. Such administrative assistance, do you think that's department heads? I don't know what, I mean, in the world of offices, administrative assistance is like, to me normally refers to clerical people.
Exactly.
I think they mean. Department, I too.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Don't they mention that?
Maybe it means to, you could hire an assistant, I mean. To me is what that's referring to.
The next, the next, the next item talks about department heads, fire chief and police chief and.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is where it gets a little bit confusing between the the chiefs and, and I do think the other thing is. And my, this is actually a question for the council, is typically mayors are only public safety, which would include. Fire and rescue.
I think though, on the impractical side, at least from my perspective is. On the day-to-day. Right, I mean, two conversations.
Sorry, we have a sidebar.
I can only hear one conversation. Just leave that little industry just just in case.
Well, I don't think it's referencing department heads, I think, I think it literally talks like you decide, they'll reset, yeah, you can hire a secretary.
An AP clerk.
Those aren't, those are administrative assistants. It's not an administrative assistant.
I would agree, but.
But it's a secretary.
Somebody to help you, the president would be fine.
Yeah, yep.
If, but we would have to.
Right, yep.
Right, again, you'd have the dollars in the budget.
So.
Right.
Are we on page one-ten now?
No, um. So the mayor brought up the chiefs, and like, even though the mayors always have authority over. Some level of public safety, like it is not fun as a city administrator when you have a mayor that has two department heads that. And I don't think that's what we're practicing here, I think both the chiefs, you know, comes me on the day-to-day stuff or ask for time off. And that doesn't exclude the mayor, but at least in my practice, when you're like, oh, and I report to the mayor, I have to report to you, it just doesn't work well, so. I think you're at saying including them.
I think we might want to just clarify that on the mayor one too. A line item regarding public safety.
What page is that on?
I know, but you were talking about another, you referring to though?
I'm referring to the mayor's ordinance on ninety-one, ninety-one, ninety-two. Because there's the appointment of the police chief.
That's always, I think that's every city.
Yeah. But I think, I was thinking, public safety, cuz it's the first. The chief's executive officer, oh, there, number two, proclamation of an emergency. So this is one where I think that clarification does need to be explained a little bit. Because there's people that think that our emergency management manager is the one who has this authority, but actually, this is a mayoral authority. So, and that is completely.
Different level, I mean, the emergency management is counted, you're, you know, it's a different level.
But even, but technically, the mayor is the only one that can do a proclamation of the emergency, like.
Within the city limits.
Within the city limits, but he can do it in the county.
Correct.
Yeah, which would include the city.
But I believe that there's people that believe that he has the authority to do all of that with.
I wouldn't see, I wouldn't read it like that.
And I think uh how you read it and how it is is two different things, I think. Um within the city limits, the mayor has all powers conferred to the, uh yeah.
Um again, in the city administrator one, I would say something, there's nothing about the budget, and then there's nothing like taking the lead on economic development stuff.
Yep.
And they both need to be in there.
And then on page one-ten, it talks about me serving as the zoning officer, but I um I'm also the floodplain person.
Yes, but that definitely needs to be added.
I just won't add that.
So you're the floodplain administrator as well.
That's allowed by the D N R and FEMA, like some cities, they are in charge, and then in other cities, it's. They designate the city to enforce.
And that's when they came down here for us, we didn't have anybody designate, we had to designate somebody.
Because they allow you to, to the point, like so in a little tiny town where there's no employees, they're not gonna say it's the city that enforces it, they'll enforce it, but. Usually when there's a city administrator, they'll delegate it to the city, still expected to uphold all. Alright, um, oh, this was a Kathy question, she's, on page one-fourteen, there was this. Policy that it says is posted, and I'm just gonna ask her, I have no idea if that's actually posted or not. But it says that it shall be posted there.
Okay.
One fifteen, so I would like some clarification on this, because part of planning and zoning, it talks about. Um all proposed locations of public improvements must be submitted to the commission, but what in the world is the definition of public improvements? Because like if we go fix an alley, or we fix repairing things, like. I just don't know how extreme that is, and so in some of the conversations of planning and zoning, they've said, well, all public improvements have to come through us, I'm like. What does that mean? Right, like, so when you look at like. Uh are you gonna?
We're gonna fix a road.
Well, a road, or let's say the park, like, but the park, for example, like fountain square, like the park board clearly. Makes decisions there, so we're talking right now about, are putting a roof over the stage, or putting a roof over the rock, like, so the tr- park and tree board's gonna say it's okay, but then technically. We don't define what a public improvement is, so like, does it also have to go to P and Z, I don't, I don't think that's what it's intended, I think it's more for like development. And like, we're putting in the townhomes and like, like, yes, but I feel like this is not clear, and so.
I would agree.
So I kind of had there, can we clarify what that is?
And I wanna make sure we clarify right-of-way permissions.
Yeah, we have that already, but it's.
It's buried in a weird place. Cuz we couldn't find it when we needed to.
Next, page one-seventeen, it currently requires that we have two members be tree people on the park board. Which I'm told by the park board that there has never been two tree people.
Yeah.
We've had one, and that's been Bill. Uh so I happened to read that, and then I emailed Bill and I was like, do we have two people? He said, no, have we ever? No. So I think this is probably just a local thing, I've never heard of it.
Yeah, and how do we, I mean, when, when Bill decides to retire, were, were we gonna get another, I don't know, rec- certified?
Get somebody from the extension office that has um some.
That's a good idea.
Well, but that doesn't mean they're gonna serve on a park.
Doesn't mean that, but it says experience, similar call.
Right, but this is that you have to be a member of the board, and then you have to live in town, so I think. To your point, that it could be someone from there, or we have some city employees that are interested in learning more about being an arborist, is that you could say. If no one on the board is, that they can consult and like have like a liaison to the board or something that advises them, but. There's again, like, what if nobody's an arborist, and so then you have to hold the position vacant because Bill doesn't wanna be out of it anymore?
Uh do we need a certified arborist on our park and tree board? I mean.
I've never had a tree board, so that's another question for me, like, I don't know, is this governed by the state?
But we do have Bill, I mean, he's, he has the experience.
Oh, no, there's no, there's no doubt to what, what Bill said, I'm saying when Bill's gone, you know, cuz he's, you know, Bill's not gonna be there forever.
We met last week about the, uh to discuss this and to do the park and tree agenda, and we said till death do us part, I guess. Like, Bill never gets to get off the board.
Right.
Because if we don't find somebody, and I said like, are there lots of other people in town? So to me, my question would be if, you know, like, that's great to have as a goal. Number one, I think one person, not two, so I would think we wanna eliminate the two, and then to be able to say. If the city's made a good faith effort to find someone to be a tree person on the board and can't. You can still fill it and not have one, and that they can consult with an extension person, a city staff person that can advise. On tree issues to the board, but it doesn't have to be a board member.
And there's, and there's state entities that are willing to come help, I can't think of the name, but Brad Riphagen is one of the guys that.
Right, but again, like you said, they're not a member.
They're not a member of the board, we're talking.
No, I understand, but I'm saying if we, we need help with Arbor's.
Right.
Questions, there are, you know, there's raw resources for that.
It just looks at the necessity of it, period, then why even have it in there if it's not, there's not some state statute that says we have to have it, and you can just take the whole thing out of there.
We're just making it harder to sell, we're making it harder to sell.
Have somebody that can take an online exam to get an arborist certificate anyway, so I mean, I don't think it's gonna be that tough to get one if we, I mean. Somebody wants to go out there, they can go online and brag, find it.
If that's the case, why require it?
Exactly, just take it out if we don't need to have it.
Yeah, I'll find out, that was a procedure.
But I just, I just looked up Arbor's.
I mean, it's great to have one. But it's not necessary. Here, Bill Drazer is burning right.
Get rid of Bill. No, I mean, he has the experience, but I'm saying if somebody wants to get certificates, all they have to do is just take an online.
No, I, I understand.
So I mean, is it really that?
But, but once again, if, if that's the case, why, why do we require?
That, that's what I'm saying too.
You change it to a consultant basis.
I think we're making it more difficult.
Yes, needed, yeah, because, I mean, we are a city of trees.
Well, and, and we do have, we've got a lot of beautiful trees, and, but we, we do very little of our own uh. A tree work ourselves, we, we contracted done, and those people are experts at what they do and.
But if we need outside consultants, I agree. The tree, bring somebody in.
I was just reading that because sidewalks, somewhere we've gotta do something with the sidewalk stuff, but. And pedestrian crashes.
That'll be featured in chapter.
Yes.
One through twenty-five.
One more to go.
If, if it is in the city right of way and the tree is pushing a sidewalk. To the point that the property owner has to fix the sidewalk.
That's all over town.
I know, that's why I'm saying, I just was looking at number three on powers and duties under the park and tree board, it is the responsibility of the board. Park and tree board. To oversee trees located within the city's parks and also within the city right of ways.
Yeah.
We've got issues with trees in the right of way and sidewalks.
Oh, sidewalks in the right of way as well.
But I would have never known that the park and tree board needed to.
They do, like when we have a right of way tree, they call Bill and. He goes and checks it out and then we decide if we're chopping her down.
Okay.
Are the sidewalks responsible, the responsibility?
You're suggesting we do something with regard to how we address lost funds?
Well.
For park and tree board.
So obviously you have lots that like you have your five percent or whatever goes to them. In our review of the accounts, and this goes the same for public safety and the same bracket on development, but like right now, people. I don't think most cities spend directly out of lost. Lost is usually a transfer to a city budget, like a department's budget. And here, it's like, use lost, use lost. And then whatever that dollar one is. And so I wanna review that. Cause I think it has to be that when the park board's budget comes forward, so let's just say we think. I'll make up a number, fifty thousand dollars is the five percent that we would get. Then they would request fifty thousand dollars of lost. There would be a transfer from lost into the park board's budget. And then they spend it in the appropriate font, like in the appropriate accounts. So if they're doing something to the, a building. Or a park facility or upgrading equipment, it still gets charged to the, uh. The appropriate account and it's a transfer out, whereas right now we just have random things getting charged to lost. I don't think that's common. So my question was just gonna be to these guys, if the council concurred is. Is there some reference in here to loss that says, you know, you get to ask for the money? And then it's transferred into the budget and it would be the same for public safety, like based on. Training money and different things like that. And I kind of brought that up at a staff meeting, the same like police and fire would say.
Yeah.
This is how much we get from loss. This is what we're asking for, for this specific fiscal year. And then it gets transferred into their budget because right now it dilutes. The story of what those departments are spending, because you have their normal department budgets and then you have this account over here that is getting spent differently.
Hundred percent.
So I think that's what's more common is you transfer out of lost into regular, so. I made that note on there to see if that's relevant in the code.
Good deal.
And then the last chapter is the airport and. Um. Again, on that powers and duties under number one, I was gonna say provided the commission shall not have the power to sell the airport. Or land. Cause we said they could only lease.
Right. Perfect.
And. With that, I think. Chunk one through twenty five is. Pretty good.
Got it. Alrighty.
And then I think the plan, uh, you'll have at the December fourth, you'll get.
Twenty six through forty fifty.
I have no idea. They have it chunked up in some plan, but.
Okay.
And if I can get it from him. Earlier, I'll send it out early.
Okay.
But I think it'll be the same with some questions.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you for all your work on that. This is a lot. And thank you council for all your review. Uh, number twenty one is the department reports. We don't have any. What did you say?
This is time for soup.
Uh, number twenty two is administrative report.
So a couple of things. One, we're working with FEMA. We started having meetings. We're gonna work with them weekly to try and get some of our. tornado money reimbursed. They'll be here on Tuesday midday every week here for a while. Steel has arrived for the public works building. And so that, I don't know what happened since I wasn't here most of today, but they were supposed to be starting to work on it already. I think their first goal is to partition off a portion of it that we at least would have some of it heated as opposed to just trying to. Kind of undertake the whole building right away. I did get a question from the citizen that I wanna clarify, um. With regard to the floodplain, people were under the impression that we, uh, we have some other properties that we're dealing with floodplain issues on. Um, and I do think this is going to be a bigger. Conversation that we probably need to have as a community and helping everybody understand the enforcement of the floodplain. Um, but because we're dealing with another property on that, I was questioned about that property. And so if you go on the FEMA floodplain map. At the location of the public works building, it is in what's called. Um, a reduced floodplain levy due to, excuse me, uh, floodplain elevation and risk. Because of the levy. And so basically that property is protected by the insulation of the levy. And then becomes a five hundred year floodplain. So if you go to FEMA and enter that address, it's orange. As opposed to blue or blue with red stripes. And so the question became, are we restricting other buildings and then letting ourselves break the rules? And our building is not under the same rules. So I just wanted to be clear on that if anybody gets asked, but it is in. An area where we do not have to enforce the floodplain on our building. It doesn't mean that we could increase the footprint. But I emailed my contact at the DNR because I was questioned by a citizen about it to confirm that we are proceeding to repair that building, even though. It could be considered more than fifty percent of the value of it. Without bringing it up to floodplain standards because it's in the orange section of the floodplain map. And only has a risk of a five hundred year flood because of the levy. If anybody gets asked about that, that's, I think, important for people to understand that we are. Enforcing the same rules upon ourselves at our building with regards to repairs there.
Can we get the fence up around the building up? The chain link fence? Wouldn't be that hard for those guys to put that up. Just make it a little bit nicer around there.
You mean.
Plant fence up blue over.
Tore up pretty good in the tornado.
Well, I'm assuming that some of it was. It did, was it from the tornado?
It's never been secured like it should be.
I don't, I don't think the fence is broken itself. It just, the, the links that held the top on the top rail line. Just blew up and it just, it would, it would take one worker to get that going.
Yeah, I can ask.
And I think that would be quick. They'd just pick up and like make that area look a little bit nicer if that fence was up.
Sounds good.
If it could be done. I'm not saying that's a.
No, I understand.
But I, I think that'd be a quick fix.
Um, and then the other thing I think that might be valuable, maybe a little bit more time after the, maybe after the new year, but I think we may wanna invite contractors. Um, just to kind of come in and have conversations about floodplanes, about variances, about building permits. Um, I just don't know that there's as much education out there and making sure that people understand when they need to come in. And making sure people understand that they need to come in before, because we have a number of situations already in my short time here that. I don't think anybody's doing it on purpose, but. There's a lot more backwork when people don't come in and see us first. And so that's kind of been. Some of the feedback that I've been getting is. People just don't necessarily know. And so maybe we just need to have a little luncheon line and invite all the contractors to come. Especially if we can get through the recertification on some of that, like what are we gonna do about being in the right of way? Um, you know, I would like to make permitting easier, you know, right now it's like you need a math degree to figure out how much a building permit is, so then people. Have to come back and pay for it. If we could make it easier, I think that that would. Um, mean that people could come in, the staff in the office could say this is what your fee is and people would pay when they're there. Because right now we send it off to SWOOPCO, we incur fees with SWOOPCO and then. Some people don't come back and pay. And so we do have a pile of permits that are unpaid.
Which also means they're not coming and getting their certificate. And sometimes they're just thinking, they're thinking their permit, yeah.
And my, I would like it to be a lot easier that we can actually email them out after. They don't have to come back if they pay ahead of time. Um, you know, we collect utility bills online. I'd like to see that we can collect fees online as well for building permits. You know, contractors are busy. I don't really subscribe to people purposely not coming in, but. When everything has to be done during the day, it's just not easy. And the rest of the world is moving into how easy can we make it for you? That'll kind of be something I wanna talk about. And.
Can we do the, um, and maybe that'll come with the, the right ordinance, but. For the plumbers with regard to our policy or whatever on filling the holes.
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue. It's called enforcement.
Okay, got it.
We, I think in the past, I'm like, oh, we're gonna sit and wait for you to come and fill a hole. And if you don't come and fill a hole, we're gonna fill it and you're gonna get built. The only thing that I think is weird is that I've never seen it where it talks about the plumber versus the property owner. We don't care who the plumber is. If you wanna hire a plumber to do it, it's your property. Like, it's the owner that's gonna be responsible. So I do think we need to, again, clarify.
Is that, we're talking about streets too?
And when they go into the road, like there's holes that are. Sitting open for a super long time because we're waiting for a plumber to come.
Yeah.
And it says, if you don't do it timely, we will come and do it.
So speaking of that, holes in the road, how about Chautauqua? We have had. We have a street part that's been ripped up for about, uh, about five months now. And another little spot that's had a. Uh, little sign stuck in it about the same time. One, and with winter approaching, when are we gonna get those done?
So I don't know where you mean. Is it on the eighth and summit that?
Big Hill, up Chautauqua and then.
On Chautauqua, so on the north side of the.
Yeah, I believe there, there's two spots. One part of the whole, whole street's ripped up. It's all gravel. And we're getting close to winter time and that has been, it's, it's all gravel stuck in there.
So we have a contractor that was supposed to come last Friday to do a. I don't know for sure, cause I didn't look at the list, but I can.
Cause I, I have a system calling and we gotta get those done, cause they've been bleeding. They've said a year, so.
Well, you know, we've had conversations about our street department doing the repairs on these plumbing patches. I really, I, I have an issue with. With just anybody being able to repair our streets. I mean, the streets need to be repaired in a certain fashion and done, you know. So they'll, so they'll, you know, last. As a matter of fact, I have a patch in front of my own home that. You know, has been repaired two, three times, cause it wasn't done properly in the first place. So I have a problem with just everybody coming and patching, digging holes and patching holes in our service.
Well, again, I think we can look at codes that have specifications that in order to work in our right of way. And make those repairs that you have to be a licensed contractor for most, so you didn't. Just anybody who, same thing with sidewalks.
But a licensed contractor that has knowledge of that. Expertise, I mean, you know.
We license you to be.
Oh, so it'll be, it'll be a local licensing.
That's what I'm.
I see. Okay.
But if you're not licensed, you can't, and this, you have to do the same thing with sidewalks, because people think they're concrete people and they're like, I'll just replace my own. And maybe, or maybe not, that they do a good job.
Well, couldn't they just go back and redo it with brick?
I don't think so.
Oh, not, are you saying that a homeowner can't replace his own sidewalk now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, because we require people to fix their sidewalk.
Yep.
And so people can come in and say, I'm a concrete person. Is that okay?
If I have a broken sidewalk in front of my house. I should be able to fix that.
Well, why is it any different than anybody can fix the road?
Because, well, I, I get them both in public right of way, but the road is, is a little different than a sidewalk. I would.
There's a much bigger liability for tripping and falling on a sidewalk, I'd say. I think you have a lot more city. Claims against communities.
Perhaps. I'm, I'm thinking of ninety thousand pound grain trucks rolling down the roads and, you know, and eighty thousand pound, you know, delivery trucks rolling down. That's what I'm thinking of. Vice a two hundred pound man walking on a sidewalk. That's what I'm thinking.
I'm just saying that. Wrecking it, that's one thing. You're looking at the hazards and remember that the state just gave back the liability for sidewalks to cities when they had given it.
Yes.
To the homeowners report. So if somebody trips and falls on a sidewalk.
So the liability's on the city.
Absolutely.
But the responsibility to maintain it is on the homeowner? That's a tough one.
Boy, it is in. Most cities. Take care of it and fix it.
What about the weekend, you have seen the waterway? Have you been up there?
I've seen them. They're wet every day.
I asked them about that. They said they're.
Okay, got it. Mayor's report, I'm just, it's in your folder. It's in your packet. Um, city council reports. Let's start with Sharon.
Well, the downtown assessment, I thought was great at the Wilson. I know a lot, a lot of us went there. Most of us, in fact, all of us. Um. I also helped with the Christmas, for the hospital exhilarating, the Christmas pageant. And I know that both of you came. That was a great success. Um, the chamber, uh, the extravaganza, we had over two hundred and twenty five attendees. Um, altruists and clusters and then I, I'm also working on the, um. Renovation of the country club.
Brian?
Uh, did the downtown assessment meetings. I did the two county commission meetings. Uh, attended the Woodland Hills progress meeting and then I just wanna throw out there, I wanna thank the, uh, Montgomery County Veterans Cornermark for putting on a wonderful Veterans Day ceremony for us. That's all I have.
Hey, Tim.
Uh, the YMCA strategic planning meeting.
What, I'm sorry, what was that?
YMCA strategic planning meeting, uh, downtown assessment. I attended that as well. I had a couple of MCDC meetings and then I did coach at the library board meeting as well.
Ah. Library, alright. John?
I attended the two, uh, downtown assessment meetings.
Okay.
And. Other than that, I haven't been pulled out of the house where I haven't do anything.
Okay. How about you, Adam?
I've met with three, uh, people about calls and, uh. I usually work during the day, so for me to go to meetings is pretty tough.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Alrighty. Oh, any items for discussion? Where are we on the fashion recycling?
Just need to find time. I've gotten some, obviously concerns from local contractors about. Being concerned that we're gonna put people out of business, try to assure people that. That is not anybody's goal, but that we're asking for services that are similar to most cities across the nation. Um. And that when I, I got asked if we would work with the two that do the majority of it, I suggested that. We would likely contract with one caller, that if they thought that they could be. They could be working together. To do it, we need to come up with that in turn and then we get to contract with one of them.
Like, it may be a subcontractor.
So one of them, you know, I think we don't wanna have like, we're billing you for this half a town and we're billing you for that half a town and then we're only, you know, we're gonna give somebody.
We just have to make that clear in the agreement that they're able to sell that out.
And then, of course, the issue is. Um, are we gonna go with, again, a more standard service where we expect like carts, toders? Um, that are a lot easier to control, like everybody gets one. Um, that's obviously a concern for the local contractors. I just think it's.
I feel that's important.
It's again, super common and. Garbage bags being set out and then they tip over and.
Yep.
Like different and they don't stick out, you don't see them.
It just looks so much nicer on trash day when everybody's is out looking.
Has the same.
Has the same, just, and it's cleaner and just it looks so much better.
Just, just have everybody would try.
Same bags, same toders, just nice.
Yeah, and again, it's because it's not what our local contractors have done. And so I just. I explained to them that we're not at that point yet, that obviously we'll get input from them. Um, but that we will try our best to balance dealing with local contractors versus feeling like. We're only allowed to provide the service that they're willing or able to provide. Now we will do our best to balance those two.
Okay. Um. We did submit the application for the community wide assessment grant. Wrong, that, got that all done. Yep. Anything else? That we can think of for the next one? Alright. All items addressed. I will adjourn this meeting. Seven eighteen.